Somebody wanted a representative.
All right, it's nine o'clock and I'll call to order the November fifteenth meeting of the Celine County Commission. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson. Commissioner Weis.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Yes ma'am.
Now if we could all stand for a flag salute and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now at the portion of our meeting where the, for the citizens input, if there's any citizens who would like to address the Commission on items pertaining to the county, please come forward, state your name.
Norman Mantle, Slaena, Kansas. Last week it was announced that we are crushing concrete and we're redistributing, spreading it out. Well, you're contaminating the groundwater. It's an environmental hazard. In Denver, Colorado, they got a big problem because they tore up all the concrete at Stapleton Airport. They crushed it and they're spreading it out. It's polluting our water, groundwater. We've got a problem right here in Celine County with the bases contaminating all this water. Now we're turning around and crushing this concrete. Calcium chloride burns you. So we need to relook at that program. It's 2022. Things are changing. And it's for the better for the environment. If we're going to save this planet, we've got to do something. At some lakes, they are banning these electric vehicles. They don't allow them anymore. This is electric vehicles. That stuff's going to go. The hazards that these batteries cause, it leaks into the environment. I don't have that sheet with me because I loaned it. The stuff that they use to make these lead batteries for the electric vehicles.
Hey Norman, anyone else who would like to speak to the Commission? Seeing none, we'll go to item number one, election canvas.
Election canvas with Jamie Doss, county clerk.
I'm sorry, did I miss something?
Nope.
Nope, you're good.
Yep.
You're good.
So I wanted to start off by saying, Celine County, we had the longest ballot in history this year. So we had a nineteen inch ballot that was double sided. So it took a, took a lot of time for not only us, but for voters to go through it. But we had a pretty good election. We had a lot of great people help throughout this election that worked really hard. So I wanted to start off by thanking everyone for that. So I'll move into the different topics and it's up to the board whether you guys want to vote on each one or vote on them as a group, whichever you prefer.
I think the group worked better last time, didn't it? Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I'll go start with the first one. And that page should be in front of each of you. We had a hundred and twenty-eight ballots that moved within county. We had eight that were, the category in Elvis, which is Election Voter Information System, is clerical error. That's the only option for that. So we had some that they had trouble at the polls with their driver's license not scanning. So they worked them as provisional, but they were in the poll book. So different reasons that we had clerical errors. But we had eight that should not have been processed as provisional. We had four name changes. And nineteen that voted, the categories voted in advance and voted at the polling place is, they were sent an advance ballot. They did not either receive it in the mail or they misplaced it and then came in and voted. So we had nineteen of those. We did not receive their advance ballot back. So that's just the one provisional vote is what we have from those voters. So we have a hundred and fifty-nine that we have as recommended to be counted.
So moved.
Second. All right, it's been moved. And second, we approve the Elvis, the, I guess, provisional ballots for approval.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. And then our next section is ones that I do not recommend be counted. We had thirty-eight that the voter was either not registered in Celine County or in Kansas at all by the deadline, which was October eighteenth. We have three that the voter voted in advance and then voted at the polling place. So they had already voted. We had already received their ballot back and then went to the polls to vote provisionally. So I don't recommend those provisional ballots be counted. We had one that failed to provide ID. And they had until today to bring in their ID. We had contacted them three times and was unable to get ahold of them for them to be able to bring that in. So we had one voter. We had a voter cast a ballot then passed away. So that is provisional. And one registered voter returned a ballot after the polls closed. So it was received after seven PM on Election Day and it was one that was carried in. So, so I have forty-four ballots that are recommended not to be counted.
All right.
So moved.
Second.
Moved. And second, that we do not approve forty-four ballots for the reasons given. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. The next section is ones that we recommend being partial counted. We have nine that moved within county and either was unable or did not go to their correct polling location. So we will want to count those nine partially. And the difference would be county commission district and house district is the only thing that's different on this year's ballot. And then townships, if they're out in the county.
So moved.
Second.
One, one quick question. The wrong polling place does not have the ability to manufacture a ballot for that specific person's address?
No. So each polling location has set precincts and those are the only ballots that they have at that location. We do recommend that they go to their correct voting location. So they do instruct them to go to their new one. But if they don't have time or if it's close to seven or just unable to drive if they're on their lunch hour or whatever, we go ahead and let them vote provisionally at the location that they're at. The supervising judge calls us and we tell them the ballot that's as close to theirs that they would so we could count as many races as possible. So most of these are just county commission and house districts that are different.
Okay. It's been moved. And second, we approve nine partial ballots. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
At the bottom, I also referenced, we had twenty-eight of ballots that were returned undeliverable. So they never made it to the voter. So their address hasn't been updated. We did attempt to contact all of those to try to remedy that situation and was unable to get ahold of them. And then we had two ballots that arrived yesterday but were postmarked after Election Day and those are not allowed to be counted because they weren't postmarked as of Election Day. So, so that's it for the canvas part of that. I do want to go over some election results that we were asked to tally. So we created not only kid ballots but teen ballots. So all of, with parents or grandparents, you know, if they brought in a child, they also got to vote on Election Day. So we had that. And we have a mascot in our office that is a gnome. It's red, white, and blue. He stands about that tall on our counter. So we kind of did a, hey, name our election mascot. So his name is Celine County Sam. That was what was approved by all the voters that came in. And we did have a couple of questions I just kind of wanted to go over because I thought they were, they were pretty great. So one of the questions on our teen ballot was how do you make your county a better place? And kindness was the number one thing. And I thought that was pretty, pretty great. And then our favorite place in Celine County was Kenwood Cove, received the most votes. Our favorite superhero was Spider-Man and Spider, and Wonder Woman tied. And then how do you get your news? And I thought that was interesting with social media, word of mouth, and, and TV were the, the ones that tied. And then, of course, we had our younger kid ballots and if they had a superpower would be speed. And their superhero was Paw Patrol. But I just thought, they wanted us to tally it. We will put that on our website, but the parents and the kids were wanting to know when they could see that. So we did try to get that done before today so that, that people were able to see that. But we do have a board upstairs that are counting the provisional ballots. And then we'll bring back on the seventeen, the, the final results for just for you to sign. And then, last but not least, I want to thank our county departments who all stepped up and either helped with delivery or helped loan us some staff to, to get through this election. We had close to two hundred election workers, you know, and they all did such a great job of stepping up and supported us in so many ways. I appreciate that. We also had our election workers who worked all day at the polls and then came in and helped hand tally Election Night until late in the morning. And so we appreciated just the dedication and the, the service to their community. It just, I appreciate where I live and where I'm, where I get to represent, you know, our county. And so, and last but not least, definitely need to thank my crew because we are called Team Two Fifteen. That's what our office is called. We all work together and, and none of this can be done without everyone working together and helping. So I'm very honored to, to be able to work with a bunch of great people and who stepped up and, and made this all happen. So just want to add that in there. So, thank you.
It just proves it takes a village to have an election.
Yeah, it does. It does.
All right. We will go to presentations.
Rebecca Seaman, Register of Deeds Recognition.
Rebecca? Well, I'm honored to be able to recognize you on your thirtieth anniversary as a employee of Celine County. And we all appreciate your hard work and dedications that, that you do in the Register of Deeds office. So if you could come forward, I, I'll come to you. How about that?
Just a camera moment. Oh yeah, there you are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I just got to say, it's been a fast thirty years. I don't know where it all went, but I've come away with a lot of amazing friendships through Celine County and staff. I, you're only as good as those that surround you. I really believe that because I've been really blessed to have amazing staff all these years. So thank you to them. Thank you to my husband who's put up with many, many late nights. So, thank you.
And Rebecca, I'm glad you brought your fan club with you today. So.
All right. We'll move on to.
Get that office open back up.
Next item.
Consent agenda.
All right. The consent agenda consists of approval, public forum agendas presented, approval of the Ashby House Capital Improvement Grant Agreement, HEC Stop Loss Health Insurance Renewal, approval of the grant agreement with K-State Salina for workforce development. Any item that the Commissioners wish to address?
Move approval. Second.
Okay. It's been moved. And second, we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Action items.
Physical Year Twenty-Three Justice Assistant Grant Assurances, Michelle Callum, Community Corrections Director.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I am before you today on a request that you approve a Justice Assistance Grants, that grant that we applied for in August. My supervisory staff and I filled out a request through the Federal Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, which we refer to as JAG in our office. And we requested twenty-three-thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars to fund a program that we have in our office called UpTrust. And I have spoken to you about that maybe before. It's a text messaging system that we can use to alert our clients when they have appointments in our office, when they have court here in district court, municipal court, anything that we're aware of, or if they have an appointment with a service provider as well. So it gives them those messages in real time. I saw it in action yesterday, drug court, we have drug court on Mondays, and they didn't get the text message out before they left the office and somebody hadn't come to court. And one of the officers had sent him a message and he had woke up to the text and came to drug court. So we feel like it's a successful program. We have been notified that we were approved, the twenty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. So I am before you today to ask that you approve by signature the acceptance of the JAG award for FY twenty-three in order to officially open that grant award. The alternatives for action are that you approve that or that you deny the request. Staff recommendation is that you approve the, by signature, the acceptance of the JAG award for FY twenty-three. If this is accepted, the grant award will cover our cost for UpTrust for an entire year. So, and if you have any questions?
Questions from the Commission?
I know this is something we've looked at for a long time, so I'm happy to see it finally implemented.
Yeah.
Almost. Almost.
And how long have you been using UpTrust?
We've been using UpTrust for, I think we launched it in twenty-twenty. It, it, of course, that was the pandemic. It took a while to get that up and going. And we've been working out the bugs for all that time. But I do feel like, it's, it's a system that they have kind of taken. It was a system that was actually used by public defenders and they've kind of taken it and morphed it into something that works better for us. So part of that process has just been getting what we need from UpTrust. So it's kind of been a give and take. And, and we meet with them regularly. For a long time, it was weekly and then two weeks. And, and now we're down to monthly meetings. So I feel like we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you. Very good.
Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the JAG award for FY twenty-three. Second motion.
Okay. It's been moved. And second, we approve FY twenty-three Justice Assistant Grant Assurances, twenty-twenty-two dash forty-seven. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, you need a signature on it.
Well, it requires an initial on every page, so I'll just leave it. Thank you.
All right, item number two.
Bid Award for Twenty-Twenty-Two Aggregate Shouldering with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
So on November seventh, we opened bids for Twenty-Twenty-Two Aggregate Shoulder Construction. And we received one bid from APEC Kansas. In your packet, you should have a copy of the bid tabulations. And it's, it's pretty typical, since I've been with Celine County, that we've just received the one bid from APEC for this, this type of work. So the, the project setup, all the shouldering work must be completed by January twenty-seventh of twenty-twenty-three. And in your packet, you should also have a map which shows the roads where we would like to add the aggregate shouldering. And note that we do have one road, which is Burma Road from the county line up to Smolyn Road. We, we added that as an add alternate. So if the budget allows, if there's enough shoulder material that we haven't put down on the other roads, if that will allow us to do Burma Road, we, we want to add that to our project locations. And alternatives for action would be to one, to accept the bid as indicated in staff recommendations, or two, reject the bid and direct staff to the wishes of the Board. Staff recommends accepting the unit prices from APEC Kansas for the amount of estimated work equalling four-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand seven-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and fifty cents. Funds for this project will be taken out of the contractual asphalt work. It currently has a, a balance of nine-hundred-and-sixty-five, around nine-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. Other work to be taken out of this account does include the, the chip seal, crack seal, and our hot mix asphalt, which the majority of that work has been completed already.
I have one question, and we have Darren here. He might be able to help. But in the past, did we not purchase a shouldering machine to allow us to be able to do shouldering? And to follow up on that, does the engineer do a engineer's estimate of prices to make sure that?
Yes. Yeah. In the, in the, the bid tabs, there is, yeah, there's a column for the engineer's estimate. And then there's a column for APEC Kansas. And so the engineer's estimate was around four-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand. And APEC came in at four-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand.
Okay.
So I don't know. Oh, there you are.
We do have a shoulder machine. The work that Justin is, is talking about is, is supplemental to what we do ourselves. We do do some of it ourselves, depending upon where the work's at and where it's located.
Yeah. The reason for my question is to make sure that.
Sure.
That we, if, if the bids got outlined, we might go in-house and do this. But it looks like they're well within the engineer's estimate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the real issue is just the number of trucks. It, it really requires to put down this type of material. You need a, a large volume of trucks because you can put this material down relatively quick. But that means you've got to have the trucks to be able to deliver the material to the shoulder and machine. And the contractor, they, they use a different shoulder machine than what we have. They're, they've got a self-propelled machine. It's a very specialized piece of equipment. And I think that's, that's a lot of the reason why we just get the one bid too. You know, you've got to have that special piece of equipment and then just a number of trucks available for the material.
Quick question here, Justin, is that all, all the, the new shouldering projects we got here, are we doing it because all of these roads here have been overlaid with new asphalt?
No, no. For, for those types of, for those shouldering projects, it's actually included in the overlay project. So APEC still needs to go back and finish that work as well to overlay those. The, these are roads that there hasn't been any work done on them. So there's just a pavement edge drop-off, you know, it's just from the, the weather, you know, erosion, settlement, and that we just need to go and add material to the roadway.
Okay.
But we do have to do those, or APEC does have to finish those, that part of the project up on the, the shouldering.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to APEC Kansas as reported and recommended by staff. Second, the motion.
Then move. And second, we approve bid award for Twenty-Twenty-Two Aggregate Shouldering, Twenty-Twenty-Two dash forty-eight. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Item number three.
Resolution Twenty-Two dash Twenty-three Seventy-Two, Road Vacation for a Portion of Chestnut Street in Bridgeport with Tammy Cox, Deputy County Clerk.
Good morning, Tammy.
Good morning. So this is the road vacation that was presented to you a little while back. The petitioner, Kay Fowler, filed a road, a road vacation application to vacate a portion of Chestnut Street in Bridgeport. So if you look up there, that kind of gives an indication of where it's at. If we go to the next slide, on there, you can kind of see where it's, where it's located there on the, right on the edge there of Bridgeport. The petitioner owns the property on both sides of the road. And the reasons for the vacation as listed on the application include safety, traffic, horses, children, and pets. And Kay is here, I believe, too, who can speak to you as well. Staff has sent certified mail to all the adjacent landowners and also mailed notice to the homeowners in the Bridgeport community. And that's something we talked about at the last meeting, is sending all those out. Staff contacted and sent letters to Rural Water District Eight and Home Telephone Company. And we do have Eight Home Telephone Company here as well. Both utilities, utilities that were identified through eight-one-one said that as long as they had the easement in there, they were okay with the road vacation. I also have the, the staff, county staff, and their responses as well listed as far as that goes. County engineer not in support, Roden Bridge not in support, emergency management's neutral, Rural Fire District Number Two is neutral, Sheriff's Office, this would close off one approach to the center of town. If this is being done for traffic purposes, only due to traffic complaints, they say that you can always call the Sheriff's Office. This road vacation presentation and resolution was published in the signed journal per statute. Staff, as far as our staff goes, we don't give any recommendation. We just provided the information. Budget impact, the cost of legal publication and certified mailing, we estimate to, to be about five-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And then if you'll go to the last slide there, the third slide, that kind of gives you kind of the overview of where Chestnut Street is and the entire community of Bridgeport. With that, I'll have Kay Fowler talk to you and, and then you guys, if you have any questions.
Good morning.
Good morning.
There's not a whole lot to add, obviously, to what she told you, other than the fact that I'm not sure, did you include my little signature page and let them see that I had visited my neighbors? Okay. So I brought it with me just in case. But I did actually get out in Glad Hand and try and meet as many of my neighbors as possible, which turned out to be a wonderful thing because I found that the least time of residency in the area out of all but seven, I think, that I managed to catch was five years. So even though Bridgeport seems as though it's kind of out there in the, the fringes and whatnot, it's a well-established community. And, and my neighbors were more than happy to visit with me. I had about four who were ambivalent essentially, but did not want to sign anything. But I did end up with, I believe, eight signatures, not counting my own, and then an email sent by another neighbor that's actually at the corner of that street, shares that street, street with me. And then, of course, myself. I, I did not sign. So definitely well in the half to a little over range. I did have comments, and I'm glad we did not spend the money on certified mail. They all were like, we don't care. It doesn't matter. It's your road. You should. We just threw it away. So, and I know a few said they called. So I think a couple actually called the office in support of it. So I, I just wanted to let you know that I had one of the comments that was made to me by the engineer was that their concern was about the community and how it would affect the community. And I thought, well, let's get out on a pretty fall day and go actually visit with them and see. And so we are a live and let live community apparently, but they were in support of it by far. So I thought I would come, visit, and relay that. And then I provided stuff in case anybody wanted to see. And then I guess, other than that, it's just, it's one of those big chunks in all of the investment that we're putting into the property thus far and the safety, as I've said before, of our personal property and pets. One neighbor said, yeah, Louis' animals used to get out all the time. They'd chased horses and llamas and all kinds of things over the year. So fencing it definitely is very important to me. But again, the access is, is going to be well in place. We've also applied for a road tube on Front Street so that we're able to do a straight through. Still, it's on private property, but that would also alleviate any emergency access concerns if we had any high-low water issues, which my ninety-one-year-old neighbor said we've never had. So anyway. But I appreciate your time and your consideration on it. And I thank you for your, your thoughts and comments. So.
Do the Commission for questions or comments?
So there has been no negative comments by, by residents?
Not that I've received, no.
Right. And that would, that, that's good news to me because that would override any other concerns that anybody had, as if the neighbors aren't concerned about it.
And one of my only concerns was, is that with the, kind of in the ballpark, with the, the Roden Bridge and the engineer not really behind it a hundred percent. So that was my thing is where it's like, if they're not behind it, I really wasn't behind it. But with you getting out and filling in your obligation to get ahold of the neighbors and find out that none of them really care, is, is the, and just a quick question here, probably to the Roden Bridge. I mean, I'm just, I mean, just a quick deal here is that this, once this is vacated, is it up to the landowner then to put up the gates on both ends?
My original conversation was not negative with Roden Bridge. And that was back in the early spring.
Okay.
Because I had mentioned that I would put up a physical barrier as well as.
Ma'am, can you come to the microphone?
Of course. I'm sorry. Yes.
We have a listening public.
I talk so loud, everyone tells me. I, my original conversation with Roden Bridge was who I spoke with back in the spring. And they did not have an issue with it at that time. And we had discussed me doing a physical barrier. I had thought very large round hay bales are a, a tension getter and some level of safety if somebody were to act. I had thought very large round hay bales are a, a tension getter, and some level of safety if somebody were to accidentally turn. He assured me they would come in, actually ditch it out, and make it appear as though it had never been there. And so that was the conversation we had back in the spring. And so I was surprised when I saw that there was a negative response on the, uh, documentation that came out.
Okay, that, that's, and, and that was kind of the same, but i- in regards to that, though, the one, one end of this, really we'll have to have a gate
Yes.
At one end, one, I mean, really for the access to the easement, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, my, my biggest concern was the safety, you know, and, and, and there wasn't a perception of a through road, you know, through there, and so, um, and I'm talking with, with Darren and on the, the maintenance crew, what they're, um, gonna do is, on the east side of the road, you know, they're gonna take out the approach, you know, to the, the north-south road, you know, that, um, on the east side of Bridgeport, you know, and take that ditch all the way through there. I don't necessarily think there needs to be a gate, um, but there needs to be some kind of an object, you know, there, just a, so there's that, not that perception that there's a through road. And like he says, they were talking bales or something else, and over time, you know, this is really just for those first couple months, um, you know, till people get used to, you know, knowing that there's, there's not a through road right there.
Right now, the intention is, excuse me, right now, the intention is, I'm having a, a lot of the, um, what is that stuff called? Sucker pipe, or the metal pipe that's been used, irrigation pipe that's been used around the property, is being pulled up to reorganize the property, and so we're going to just continue the fence along that way on that side. And then the actual gating will be on the west side, so that we still have a small portion of that road that'll be our drive, because it's in between the houses, but then it'll be gated there, because it'll be horse pasture. So, that's how it will be completely not obvious to be a road anymore, so. And then I assumed we were allowed to post private drive signs once everything is in place, so, yeah.
And HCI don't have any?
No, as long as there's still a utility easement that we can maintain, or getting in that easement. HCI is good with that, so.
Okay.
And I'm Eric Nordstrom from HCI, we have internet down in that area. Thank you.
Eric, question, you're, i- is that a fiber?
It is a fiber optic cable.
And, uh, we're, putting a ditch north and south through there, would that?
I would say we'd be good, we work well with the county, um, with the locates and all that, and we should be good.
Now, I'm thinking of expenses, if you would have to do something, and who that would fall on.
I, by all means, well, I, the only thing that I have knowledge of is that I called, and hi, I don't know if I spoke with you or not, uh, because I saw the flagging for HCI when we got the homes, and so I called to make sure it was still in place, um, because the house, the one, had been abandoned for a while. And so, yes, everything was there, again, runs along Main Street, and then pokes into the properties and whatnot. Uh, but then this, hmm, probably a month or so ago, there were gentlemen that were on Front Street, over at the end of my horse pasture, between myself and Irene, and they were ditching out and, and implementing stuff. Um, I don't believe they were HCI, they were the subcontracting company that were doing the dirt work. Um, but they were like, no, this is your last customer here, and so, so that was essentially it. So it doesn't run along there that I am aware, and I, there was nothing flagged, nothing painted, or anything else, so. But, to be frank, if there's some expense that needs to be shared by me as a homeowner, it's not an issue, obviously. It's something that's very important to us, uh, for long-term, so. Oh, and, and I may have mentioned that, but the sun is alignment, and so cutting off access to utilities would make me the least favorite person at Thanksgiving, so.
Okay.
And Darren, Sling County is responsible for road maintenance in Bridgeport?
Yes, we are.
Okay. So that would take a section of road off of your plate?
Yes.
Any more questions from the commission? Questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-three seventy-two for the road vacation for Chestnut Street in Bridgeport.
Second motion.
All right, it's been moved in second, that we approve Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-three seventy-two, road vacation, a portion of Chestnut Street, Bridgeport, twenty-twenty-two dash forty-one. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign?
Nay.
Motion carries three to one. All right, we will move on to informational items.
Human Resources Quarterly Update with Marilyn Lemur, Director.
Morning Marilyn.
Good morning Commissioners. This interval is, uh, mid-August to mid-November twenty-twenty-two. Uh, under the accomplishments, uh, we have hired fifteen full-time employees, plus thirty-four election, uh, that we processed during that timeframe. We've had eight positions, or employees, that have transferred or promoted to different positions. We have eighteen that are no longer employed. Our miscellaneous activities that occurred during this time is, uh, implementation of the no-weight inside texting option, um, and allows us to communicate by text, um, with applicants. Try to avoid some of those no-shows, or, or, um, you know, if somebody needs to reschedule. Um, we had a successful employee in-service training day in, um, on Columbus Day in October. Uh, we also completed our open enrollment with new plan designs, and implemented, um, the use of health savings accounts, and also a limited-use flexible spending account for employees. We also completed bargaining unit negotiations. Um, I also attended the KAC Annual Conference. Our plans moving forward is to fill vacant positions. Uh, when I wrote this update, um, those were the positions that were vacant, it's, uh, just a moving target. Uh, we are currently sitting on thirty-three vacant positions. Uh, we will continue to work on salary and job description changes for twenty-twenty-three due to the WSU Salary and, uh, Compensation, um, survey that was earlier this year. Uh, we also continue with the United Way Campaign, it's an internal campaign for employees. Uh, prepare for our office relocation, that will be next month. Um, and then just prepare for some various policy updates, um, in twenty-twenty-three. As far as the budget update, the health plan ended the year, um, on September thirtieth at a hundred and four percent expense to funding ratio. However, we do expect more, and have had some stop-loss reimbursements that have occurred, and so that's gonna bring that, um, closer to a hundred percent. Uh, the dental plan ended the plan year on, uh, September thirtieth with a ninety-four percent expending to funding ratio. And then the budget is at seventy-six percent used, and is in line with historical averages for HR operations. And that is all I have and available for questions.
One thing that stands out to me, Marilyn, is, uh, we had, uh, hiring of two corrections officers, and, uh, we have four no longer employed, that's a net loss of two.
Right.
And, uh, these were all, uh, correction officer one position, so I would say they were fairly new in the position.
Yes, yes, and we, we are struggling to, to fill that, that particular position. Um, we were approved for, uh, additional positions for twenty-twenty-two, and more for twenty-twenty-three, and we are struggling just to keep up with just the typical turnover that's happening.
I'm, I'm sure you do an exit interview with, with these folks? Anything glaring through those exit interviews that might help us is?
Nothing that really stands out, I think, uh, the corrections field is not the right position for everybody. It takes a really strong person to, to be able to do that type of work, and so, you know, I think some of them get in, and it, and it may not be what they expected, and, um, have decided, you know, it, it's not for them.
All right, any other questions for Marilyn? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Item number two.
Twenty-twenty-two Annual Treasures Report with Jim DeBois, County Treasurer.
Good morning, Jim.
Good morning Commissioners. Before I get started, I, I did want to thank, uh, our clerk, Jamie Dos, uh, for all the hard work she's done during the elections, but not only during the elections, but she also had to gather all the levies, and we had some counties that were, we were waiting on, and that makes me nervous, because I want to make sure that we get out the tax statements in a timely manner. And so between Janie and me hounding some of my fellow treasurers, uh, around there, uh, we were able to get everything put together, and matter of fact, everything's at the printers, and we hope to get the tax statements out around the twenty-third. So, uh, after you have your Thanksgiving meal, you'll get your tax statement, so. I, uh, I wanted to go on and, and, uh, this was really kind of a two-part report. Uh, one's gonna be on the idle interest, and the other one's kind of a breakdown of where we're at on our annual report. But on the idle funds, uh, I wanted to, if you take a look at it, to go three-quarters down, uh, of the page, where it says first, second, and third quarter, uh, it's really kind of good news. Sometimes, I, I know the last couple times I've been up here, it's, uh, been a, a little, uh, saddening, I guess, I was looking for the right adjective, uh, to put in there because of the interest rates. Uh, and I did tell you before that, uh, as the economy, uh, kind of tanks a little bit, and we head towards, uh, a recession, or a possible recession, of course, the Fed raises the rate. And if the Fed raises the rate, we actually earn more interest off of our investments. So, in twenty-twenty-one, uh, last, uh, last year, we earned seventy thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents in the third quarter. This year, we've earned a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and seventy cents for a net of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, a hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents. Uh, we estimated, uh, a total of earnings for twenty-twenty-two, and it was just an estimate as we start to look at our budget, of three hundred thousand dollars as of the third quarter. Interest earned as of September twenty-twenty-two is four hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and two seventy-four. We've exceeded, uh, the interest rates that we have, which is good news for the county. Uh, so we're still waiting on fourth quarter, we're anticipating that, uh, fourth quarter will be pretty good for us, and we'll probably be closer, I hope, uh, to where we were in, at least, uh, above twenty-twenty in the, in the final numbers I've put together. But if you look in interest earned as of December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-one, it was only two hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. So we've done pretty well on that. Uh, the second page is gonna be, uh, more of our jail funds that's in the municipal investment pool. Uh, I don't have really anything to compare it to, other than December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-one, we only earned twelve thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars. Uh, third quarter is two hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars, and that's because the interest rate that we're earning on is a one-point-six-three, uh, which has been very good for us. Any questions on idle fund reports?
Questions?
Okay, let me move on, this is kind of a breakdown of where we're at on our investments. We have eight million, seven hundred thousand dollars invested in various instruments. Out of that, we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, through Bennington State Bank and US Treasury bills, that we went through them. Uh, our bank accounts, we have twenty-eight million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars. And the breakdown shows that the Bank of Tuskegee, we have two hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. Equity State Bank is sixteen thousand, three hundred and fifty. Bennington State Bank is twenty-six million, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and six hundred and fifty dollars, I'm sorry. And Bank Six was one million, two hundred and ninety-four, six fifty-seven and eighty cents, for a total of twenty-eight million, two seventy-six, four fifty-one. Our certificates of deposits, our CDs, and you can see the breakdown is eight million, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and if you add that to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our treasury bill, that will equal the eight million, seven hundred thousand dollars of investments. And then down below, we have fifty-two hundred dollars of petty cash, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars of cash on hand. And remind you, this is as of November first, uh, the municipal investment pool, and that's decreased a little bit because of payouts that we've had, uh, for the jail of sixty million dollars, nine hundred and eighteen, uh, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars, uh, for our total Sling County funds of ninety-seven million, nine hundred and eight hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-three cents on there. Uh, the abstract, which was, uh, done by the, uh, County Clerk's Office, has shown the certified abstract as of twenty-twenty-one was, uh, eighty-one million, two hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and four dollars. And of course, you've seen that before, it, it came by, uh, was presented to you, I believe, by the clerk? Or by me, somebody gave it to you? Or, or by the county administrator? But the, uh, but the breakdown is shown, if, I don't know if you want me to go through all of those in there, but it does show the breakdown of what the state of Kansas, uh, gets, Sling County, all the cities, to all the school districts, and we do have a multitude of school districts we pay into. Uh, the cemeteries, the libraries, the airport authority, extension districts, free to townships, and special assessment tax. But our total taxes was eighty-one million, two hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and four dollars on that. The net adjusted tax roll was eighty million, nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars. Uh, our total taxes collected was seventy-nine million, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars, and nine hu- nine hundred and twenty-three, uh, thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars. Uh, I will say that we were on our delinquent side, and I think we've done pretty well. Our percentage of delinquencies to date was one-point-one-eight percent, uh, which is around nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. So, as a county, I think we've done very well. Hope to continue that process in there. Uh, the only thing that, the only caveat I wanted to kind of mention is that, uh, we actually earn more now in our money market than we do all of our CDs and investments, uh, over the last year. So, uh, take it for what it's worth, uh, we're making a little bit of money, and, uh, with all the improvements and things that the county has done, I think that's good news. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Questions of the treasurer?
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you.
Move on to item number three.
Livestock and Expo Third Quarter Update with Jeremy Bowman from Livestock and Expo.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning Jeremy.
This is our third quarter, um, update for the department, um, from September to November twenty-twenty-two. Accomplishments, the expo, we continue to train new guys, um, new roof in our office building, and, uh, electric rails are installed in barn one, uh, winterized barn two, and the north end of ag hole. We paid into inside the, um, off, the shop, and we also got our radios in for better communication. And, um, we're working on donation and sponsors for the expo. And on the noxious weed department, we have started spraying for the fall season, um, as well as working with annual surveys. We have hired an applicator that has been training, uh, by studying his CDL. Our, um, weed supervisor is qualified and has been approved to train, um, as a CDL instructor behind the wheel, in theory, testing for our department, and he also attended the, um, KAC Conference twenty-twenty-two. Uh, the plans for the expo going forward, I would doing some repair work to the panels in ag hall. Um, work on, uh, doing some painting, getting, uh, buildings back to in shape for twenty-twenty-three. Uh, we'll start servicing equipment and continue toward, um, working with donations and sponsorships. Um, the weed department will begin winterizing vehicles, and the applicator will continue to training, or studying and training. We will be going to contact Roden Bridge and be able to work together on tree spraying. Um, start looking, will be starting looking into chemical bids for the twenty-twenty-three. Um, we'll work on our annual report and a management report, and also continue looking for opportunities to improve our methods of spraying through, uh, spray sync, that's a GPS tracking. Um, the farm, we're studying replacement of a east pasture fence, and, uh, we're made arrangements for fall spray, uh, pasture for the mustisal with milestone. The budget update, the expo has, uh, the budget used is eighty-one point one-six percent. The budget update, the expo has, the budget used is 81.16%. The weed department deposits from chemical cells are ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. The budget used is 76.28%. And weed special equipment is at seventy-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents. And the county farm is one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-six cents. With that.
Questions of the commission?
Good report. Thank you.
Dear Mayor.
I don't know if it's a fair question or not, but are we getting any All-Hague Scholarship applications through or?
I haven't heard of any yet.
Oh, okay. All righty.
We'll update you guys if we get any more in, so.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
To follow up on that, that's a good point, Mike. I don't know who might do it, but maybe the deputy or the county administrator or someone reach out to counselors and at the schools and and just remind them again that this is available.
Yeah, David does reach out to the counselors at the different schools, but we've also talked with our public information, new public information officer about doing a more concerted publicity effort on this. I think she and David were scheduled to meet and talk about what how else they could promote this.
Very good. All right, we'll move to item number four.
County Administrator's update with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just one item to update you on today. The commission will recall that Celine County and in particular the Salina area have been struggling with having adequate housing. And the city of Salina has taken the lead on a number of different options for housing, including implementation of a policy for rural housing incentive districts. RHIDs, as they are known, differ a little bit from some of the other tools that the city can use in that the county actually has a protest ability to to stop the formation of an RHID. When the city took the the first RHID forward, we had a discussion with this body about that. And what we ultimately decided to do was not only to not protest, but actually to participate. And we allocated up to one million dollars of our American Rescue Plan Act funding toward water and wastewater infrastructure at the new subdivision, which is now known as Southview Estates. Pleased to let you all know that they are having a ribbon cutting today at 4:30 this afternoon to officially launch that project. They do have their water and wastewater in, and we've expended over five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars toward that and filed for reimbursement out of the tax increment for that expense. So I plan to go out this afternoon and see it for myself. That's what I had to update you on today.
Very good. Item number five.
Commissioners' comments.
Comments of the Commissioners? Item number six.
Announcements.
Well, I too plan on bundling up and going out to Southview this afternoon to to see the ribbon cutting, so.
And I think the clerk mentioned it earlier, but just to announce again that there will be a special commission meeting this Thursday to complete the canvas.
Correct. Nine o'clock Thursday. Item, I guess that's it. Any other announcements? Okay, we'll now move into concept discussions.
Discussion of WSU study non-salary recommendations.
Good morning again, Commissioners. County Commissioner Philip Smith Haynes. So HR Director Marilyn Leamer earlier referenced the fact that this year we had Wichita State come in and do a study on how we could be a more attractive employer. And of course, the biggest finding from that study was related to salaries, and that's something that the commission has voted to implement for 2023. And so that's been sort of the focus. But there were some other things that were mentioned by WSU in their study. And just wanted to follow up on those as well so they did not get lost. In particular, on page 14 of the study, it says, "In the current job mark or in the current market, job seekers are not only looking for a job that fits their skills and interests, but are also looking for optional benefits to improve their overall quality of life. The following should be continued or considered as appropriate to support employees: flexible schedules and remote work options, health and wellness or social memberships, volunteer time off, continuing education, company swag, special interest clubs, free desktop music, and enhanced break rooms." And so, you know, I took a look at what we are doing along those areas. Regarding flexible schedules and remote work options, we do have existing policy 2020.13A, which talks about flex schedules, and we do have policy 40.54 on telework. Health and wellness memberships, that's probably an area that we could enhance. But I will note that WS, uh, WSU, YMCA, too many acronyms in my head. YMCA does waive enrollment for county employees, and I believe we have some group discounts at some of the other fitness places in town as well. Again, that's something we can look into more. Continuing education, we have policy 30.20 on tuition reimbursement. We also, of course, offer the in-service day, which Marilyn also referenced earlier. Company swag, again, something I think we could probably enhance, but we do have lanyards that are issued to all new employees. Some departments provide shirts, other types of things. Continue to look at at other ways we can do that. Free desktop music, I've talked with IT about that. That presents some issues with bandwidth if we do streaming music. Marilyn likes to say it's called a radio, so. So we we may not actually implement that one, but enhanced break rooms. As new and renovated buildings come online, that's certainly something that we're taking into account. We are doing quite an enhancement for the break room at the new jail and sheriff's facility. We're also cognizant of that as we remodel 229 North Ninth as well as the renovations that are occurring in this building. So you'll notice I skipped over two things in that list, but those are sort of the things that we have that we're that we're kind of already in process. So the two things that I did not mention that WSU recommended were volunteer time off and special interest clubs. And both of those things, I think, are ripe for the development of new policy initiatives at the county. I think those are reasonable benefits that a lot of employers offer and that it makes sense for us to look into. So in particular, I've started down the 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 road on special interest clubs. And I've worked with department heads, with EMP, and borrowed a policy from another county and have a draft to, I've floated out a couple of times, to create what are called employee resource groups. Employee resource groups are really voluntary associations of county employees or employees of a company focused around a particular issue. So for example, I have a good friend who led a veterans' resource group at his last company that he was with. He's a 21-year Navy veteran. And so he's provided me with some some things that they had done, and I think we may have some interest from some of the veterans here at Celine County. I've talked with Jason Tiller and a couple others about the possibility of doing something like that. So I wanted to sort of float that out to the commission and get any feedback on thoughts on bringing potential employee resource group policy back. And then if if we do that, then the next one that would be on my list would be the volunteer policy. So any feedback on that one as well. But that's that's the concept. Discuss.
Well, I'm happy to hear that we're doing a lot right now. You're right, when they gave that report, I focused mainly on the wages and kind of forgot about all their other recommendations later in the process. But great, great to hear that we're already doing things. And I'm totally supportive of you going ahead or of us, that's just me, you know, going ahead with what you're what you're talking about. Those all make sense. Wichita State is right. People are looking for more than just wages, and it just just makes sense to me.
Proceed.
I agree. Anything that we can do to make the workplace more enjoyable, especially if it doesn't come with a large price tag and it doesn't it doesn't impede production, I am all for it. So don't don't be limited to what WSU said. Think outside the box about anything that might might make an improvement, help Marilyn in her job of recruitment and retention.
I'm especially interested in the volunteer aspect of it. That makes sense to me, too. You know, the people that work here obviously already care about the county. They wouldn't work for the county, but there's a lot of different ways to give back to the county than just working here. And all the all the organizations that are looking for people to fill their boards and their volunteer groups, you know, normally, frankly, that happens during work hours, you know, that they do that. So I I especially like the direction that you're going with on that.
I kind of concur with everything that's been going on. Yeah, sounds great. Move forward if I was you.
Proceed.
Okay, thank you.
I think that brings us to the end of our agenda, so I would welcome a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved. In second, we adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Were adjourned.